Mr. Vignani has shown up and he's here and he's a full voting member this evening.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed with the application, if I could just quickly swear in our planner as he is new this evening. If you could raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Do you want to explain both applications?
I can explain. You can let him do it if you want me to do it. I mean...
You want to present how you want to give your applications or the...
You want me to explain how you want to proceed? You want to explain how you want to proceed?
Yeah, so for the record, Anthony Zerillo from Mulan, Skollman, and Spitzer on behalf of Solar Landscape. What we're going to do is, I think, because both of these projects, as you'll see, are very similar in nature, there's a few little technical difficulties in terms of specifics. What we're going to do is, we're going to, we would like to do two South Middlesex site first. Do that, run through the whole gamut and all the whole spiel with that. And then with regard to the one Jibera application, we will hit basically the site-specific information and then reiterate all of the planning testimony that we will write for the first site. Because some of the bulk variances are a little bit different, as you will see. So I think that's how, does that make sense?
It makes sense. And anything else that we think we need to incorporate into the second one, we'll just grab and bring back in if we need it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Perfect.
So as I said, so Anthony Zerillo from Mulan, Skollman, and Spitzer. The applicant is seeking minor site plan approval with use in bulk variances to install rooftop solar panels and associated ground equipment on the existing warehouse building for use as part of the community solar program. The property is located at two South Middlesex Avenue, identified as block 58 lot 24. On the tax maps, the property is approximately twelve and a half acres and is in the LI light industrial zone. Other than installing the rooftop solar panels and the associated ground equipment, there are no other changes that are proposed to the site. Just by the way, a little bit of background, Solar Landscape is seeking to install solar panels on the property in connection with the community solar program. The state first launched this program in 2018, and the Board of Public Utilities voted in 2023 to establish it as a permanent program. While using the community solar energy program, individuals and businesses can benefit from solar energy systems without needing to install solar panels on their own property. Participants receive several benefits, including paying a reduced energy bill by utilizing clean and renewable energy resources. Significantly, these community solar projects are required to serve a majority of low and moderate income customers. Solar Landscape has been actively involved with the community solar program for several years and continues to install solar energy systems in municipalities throughout the state. The applicant is seeking a D1 use variance because community solar is not a permitted use in the LI zone. Additionally, the applicant is seeking one bulk variances, one bulk variance with respect to locating the ground equipment for the solar panels. The side yard setback for his every required yard must be open and unobstructed from its lowest level to the sky. As will be more thoroughly discussed by the applicant's planner, the record will show that the applicant satisfies the positive and negative criteria set forth in municipal land use law to warrant the requested relief. Positive criteria is satisfied here as a matter of law because the... Positive criteria is satisfied here as a matter of law, because the MLUL specifically recognizes solar energy facilities as inherently beneficial use or a use which is universally considered of value to the community, because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. The record will further show that the applicant satisfies the negative criteria under the seek of balancing test, because the public interest greatly outweighs any detrimental effect. Record will also show the applicant satisfies the criteria to be entitled to the requested bulk variances. Person of the price v. Hameji, the bulk variances are subsumed into the grand of a use variance. However, the record will alternatively and independently reflect the applicant satisfies the positive criteria by advancing multiple purposes of the MLUL, including A promoting the general welfare, G providing sufficient space in appropriate locations, M encouraging coordination of various public-private procedures, and with a view of lessening the cost development into a more efficient use of the land, and N promoting the utilization of renewable energy resources. Finally, the applicant satisfies the traditional two-pronged negative criteria. To satisfy the negative criteria, the applicant must show that granting the variances will not cause a substantial detriment to the public good, nor will impair the intended purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. As part of the applications this evening, the applicant will rely on the testimony of the following witnesses. We have Courtney Breeze, who's a representative of Solar Landscape, Ryan Hallosi, who's the site engineer, and Andrew Janu, who's our planner. And as a matter of record-keeping, we are in receipt of the board engineer's review letter, which is dated September twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, and the board planner's second review letter, which is dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. With that, I'd like to have Courtney come up and we can have her sworn in.
Counsel, before we bring anyone up, I want to put on the record, we'd like a copy of the transcript.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. If you could just raise your right hand for me, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please, and if you could try to use the microphone. Perfect.
Network. Okay. Courtney Breeze, and it's B-R-E-E-S isn't Sam E.
And your professional address for the record.
Oh, sorry. My personal address?
Professional.
Oh, professional.
Yep.
Like company or like?
Yeah, that's perfect. I don't think anybody wants to know where you live, so we're just trying to make it. All good.
Six thirteen Bangs Avenue in Asbury Park.
Super duper.
Do we have to run through credentials?
No, she's just a faculty, I believe. All right, Courtney, could you provide what your position is at Solar Landscape?
I am a pre-construction manager for Solar Landscape.
Could you, for the record, just describe Solar Landscape, when you guys were formed, where you're located, and how many employees do you have?
Yep. So Solar Landscape is the leading commercial and community solar developer. In the U.S., we develop, install, and operate solar projects on commercial and industrial rooftops. We've deployed more than four hundred megawatts of renewable energy projects, leased about a hundred million plus of square feet on commercial rooftops, and it's totaled in over a billion in capital investment. We were founded in twenty twelve and have been the forefront of the community solar program since it was launched in twenty eighteen, located in Asbury Park, and we have about three hundred employees.
Great. And this site is Two South Middlesex Avenue. Why did you guys select this site? Good. Is that my mic? Out of technology. All right, so, so again, Courtney, you're aware of the site is Two South Middlesex Avenue. Could you talk about why you guys selected this particular site? Did you conduct any due diligence and confirm that you guys have the equipment and you're ready to proceed with construction?
Yep. So at Solar Landscape, we perform a multitude of due diligence to determine and evaluate buildings for potential community solar usage. Our due diligence includes utility grid availability and capacity, amount of roof space, the age of the existing roof, the structural integrity of the building, and interest of the community and the builder owner. And we do have all major equipment purchased and ready for construction.
And you have to get these specific projects approved by the Board of Public Utilities, correct?
Yes. The projects, these projects specifically were awarded to us through the twenty twenty-four Community Solar Energy Program, or as we call it, CSEP. That is run by New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. So New Jersey Board of Public Utilities requires an application be made for review and acceptance into this program. At minimum, they require an initial site design, conditional approval from the utility, and submission or receipt of submission of zoning permits, so like we did for this project.
Great. You mentioned that this is part of the community solar program. Can you just describe to the board what are the benefits, what community solar is, and what are the benefits of it are?
Yep. Community solar programs allow all homeowners and renters to receive savings, the savings benefit of solar energy by subscribing to the community solar project. Subscribers enable community solar providers like Solar Landscape to build and operate solar projects that add more clean energy to the local grid. In return, subscribers receive solar credits on their electric utility bills that reduce what they owe, saving them money. Subscribers do not need to buy any special equipment, and they don't need to install solar panels on their own rooftops.
And what kind of marketing do you guys do to get the word out, so people can participate?
We like to work with the town, doing newsletters, hosted information centers in libraries, senior centers, and then just standard advertising in newspapers.
Great. And then, as I stated in our little opening, there's a requirement that a certain number of subscribers have to be low and moderate income individuals. How do you guys ensure they receive that benefit, and what is that requirement?
So it is a state requirement that it's fifty-one percent, and that part is covered in the application process when you're signing up for the program.
Great. And how do customers receive the discount on their bill? Do they have to do anything special, or is it just kind of pop up in their utility bill they normally get?
Nope. So the state moved to its consolidated billing, so when a customer receives their bill, they'll actually see the credits that they're receiving from the community solar initiative.
Okay. And then if we could just go into the specifics of this particular project. Could you describe to me approximately what the discount rate would be, how many homes it's anticipated to benefit, and then could you just confirm for the record that you guys do have a lease agreement with the property owner, you're allowed to put the solar panels on the roof personally to that lease agreement?
Yep. So for this specific project, it'll benefit about three hundred and twenty-five homes at a twenty percent discount rate. We do have an executed lease agreement with the property owner. And then, extra details, we have received FAA confirmation that no FAA permit is needed. The panels have a anti-reflecting coating on them, and this utility is JCPN.
What is the approximate lifespan of the panels for this project?
Twenty-five years.
Okay, and I'm assuming that you guys have some sort of maintenance team that goes out if something needs to be fixed or if something is broken. Can you just describe how that is done, and particularly how you get access to the roof for this particular building?
Yeah. So for these projects, we have, it's called an O and M team, so our operations and maintenance team, it's a two-man crew. They do like a bi-annual inspection. They bring their own equipment to safely access the roof. They are OSHA and NFPA certified. And then for panel maintenance, we rely on the rainwater to do the main source of cleaning for the panels. We don't remove snow, we just allow it to melt naturally, and none of this causes an issue. The panels still produce energy during all the natural elements.
And if in the event a panel is damaged, do you, is there a system in which solar gets notified that something needs to be fixed, or how does that work?
Correct. So it has a monitoring system that will read back to our computers at Solar Landscape. If anything's damaged, any production issues, and then that's where O and M team comes in, and we send them out there to assess the situation.
Great. And then you mentioned that the lifespan is around twenty-five years. What happens at the end of that period? And you guys, is there some sort of a plan in place that you guys have in order to get the panels off of the roof, and could you describe that?
Yeah. So at Solar Landscape, we do have a decommissioning plan. If you guys have not seen that, we can also provide a copy to you guys. So per our agreement with property owners, all solar facilities must be removed, and the leased property needs to go back to its original condition prior to the installation.
Okay, great. And then if you just could just run through how much power this particular system is to generate, how many panels are total proposed, and then how many homes it will benefit? We did not touch on that already.
Yep. So again, this one is three hundred and twenty-five homes. The number of panels, it's three thousand six hundred and seventy-three, and then power generation is two thousand six hundred and seventy-three megawatts a year, which is about two million six hundred and seventy-three kilowatts per year.
And just confirm that the utility for this is JCPN?
Correct.
And then the project's life cycle, could you just describe that?
Yep. It's about twenty years, and then there's a three, five-year optional addition.
That's all the direct questionings I have, questions I have for Ms. Breeze, if we want to open it up to the board.
No, we're going to go through your testimony, then if any board members have questions, we'll go that route.
Sure. That's time I'll call Ryan Hallosi, our site engineer. What are you giving us?
It's an exhibit. We can mark it as A-one or A-two, depending on the order we run to go. It's just a, it's a zoomed in.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll call it A-one, and it is, what is it? Describe it while you're walking. Yeah, we'll wait until you get back over there, but. All right, while you're warming up, if you could move that mic, raise your right hand. Perfect. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Ryan Hallosi, H-O-L-L-O-S-I, and my address is nineteen eighty-five Highway thirty-four in Wall, New Jersey.
Perfect. All right, Ryan, could you please just give your, the board the benefit of your background and credentials?
I've been a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since two thousand twenty-four. I've testified in front of numerous boards across New Jersey, but never in front of this board, and my license is currently in good standing.
Well, we'll accept his credentials.
Okay, Ryan, if you could just describe the exhibit that you just handed out, that we marked it as A-one?
Yes, A-one, the exhibit is like, it's zoomed in exhibit focusing on the equipment location, and then going, going back off that. This is A-two, we can call it, and this is an existing aerial with the proposed solar panels on the roof in the blue, and then the equipment, which is in A-one in this northeast, northwest area of the site.
And are those exhibits dated?
Yes, both of them are dated twelve to twenty-five.
All right, great. So Ryan, if you could, could you just describe the existing conditions of the site, address, block, and lot zone, all that sort of thing?
Yeah, the site is designated as block fifty-eight, lot twenty-four, containing twelve point five acres, and is located within the LI zoning district as frontages along South Middlesex Drive, and it's, the surrounding property is industrial, commercial, and residential uses. The site is currently developed with a warehouse building.
What's, can you just describe the uses that surround it?
Yep. So it's mostly industrial and commercial. There is single-family housing towards the north and east, but again, it's very landscaped, and there is a highway in between it, so I don't see any noise that the residents would be affected by.
And it appears that they're surrounded by significant buffers that already exist to the, looks like the west and the north?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, great. And then, just moving on to the applicant's proposal, can you just describe the relief we're seeking, and then just describe to the board the solar panels?
Yeah, in, in regards with the use variance, there's going to be one bulk variance, which is the, because of the equipment in the side yard. Whereas every required yard must be open and unobstructed from the lowest level to the sky, and there is no pre-existing nonconformities on the site.
Then with this one, we revise these plans from what was originally submitted to the board, correct?
Correct. The equipment moved from in front of the building to now in the rear.
And it was in the front, it was in the front yard more toward, like, on the frontage of South Middlesex Avenue?
Yes.
Great. And that, that was the extent of the changes?
Yes.
Okay. Could you just describe this, the panels, and talk about their height, and just confirm for the record that we comply with the height requirements?
Yeah. The panels will lay flat on the roof and add approximately five inches of height to the building. They are low glare. The, also the inverters will be on the roof as well, and they add about three feet to the roof. The panels and inverters will not exceed the maximum height limitation on the site, which is forty-five feet. The existing building right now is thirty-three feet.
And so with the, with the inverters, that would be thirty-six feet?
Yes.
And then could you just describe how the roof is accessed for the purposes of the module maintenance?
Solar Landscape has a whole access plan to access the roof for maintenance. Maintenance usually comes by yearly, if there's any sort of maintenance that needs to be taken care of on the roof.
Okay, great. And then moving to the ground equipment, if you could just describe what the ground equipment is comprised of, where it's located, and the size of it, and how tall each piece of equipment is?
Yeah, it includes four new utility poles, a transformer, and a switchboard. The total area of the switchboard is about seventy-five square feet, and it's seventy-seven feet tall. The transformer is again about seventy-five square feet, and it is about six feet tall. And the utility poles are about nine point one feet away from the property line.
And we're not conflicting with any of the existing utilities that are on the site, correct?
No.
Okay. And then can you just confirm for the record that there are no pre-existing inconformities on the site?
Yes, that's correct. There's no pre-existing.
Okay. And then we have no issue with complying with any of the comments that are in the review memorandums?
No, we will comply with everything.
That's all the direct questions I have for Mr. Hallosi. And this time we'll have Andrew Janu come up. He's our planner.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Certainly. It's Andrew Janu, J-A-N-I-W, three fifteen Highway thirty-four, Colts Neck, New Jersey.
Great. Andrew, if you could just give the board the benefit of your background and credentials.
Certainly. So I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm principal in the firm of Beacon Planning and Consulting Services, currently serving as the planner for the borough of Carteret, the borough of Freehold, Livingston Township, and redevelopment planner for the cities of Bayonne and South Amboy. I've appeared before this board.
You had me at hello. Counsel, we're good to go.
Excellent, excellent. All right, Andrew, so could you just confirm for the record that you have visited the site?
I've been to the site. I've reviewed the correspondence, the review letters that have been issued, as well as the updated review letters. I've reviewed your ordinance, your master plan, and specifically the elements related to renewable energy within your master plan.
Great. And could you just, whether in your opinion, the applicant satisfies the positive and negative criteria to warrant the requested relief that we are seeking this evening?
Certainly. So specifically, the relief we're seeking this evening is a D-one variance for the solar use, which is not permitted in the LI district, as well as relief from Section one oh eight dash five point three C, which requires an open and unobstructed side yard, open to the sky, whereas we're putting, as Ryan explained, the utility poles, the transformer, and the switchgear equipment. So it's a D-one variance and a C variance. In preparation for this evening, as I said, I mentioned you reviewing your master plan, your ordinances, as well as the municipal land use law in terms of purposes of the application, being something that's not only for the benefit of the applicant, but for something that's a public benefit. With respect to your master plan, and I had mentioned you have some specific language related to renewable energy. On page one thirty-two, under the goals and recommendations, there's a section entitled Rational Nexus of Infrastructure and Utilities. And two of those goals are to promote the use of renewable sources, and specifically to incorporate community solar project into Monroe's power grid. We are on point with furthering those goals of your master plan. And I, as I mentioned, the municipal land use law was reviewed in order to determine what public purposes would be advanced by this application. Leave Anthony read in for, just to reiterate, reiterate, excuse me, there to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. I'll speak more a little. I'll speak more a little bit in terms of uh, renewable energy, but they are uh, renewable energy sources such as solar panels are recognized by the state legislature as inherently beneficial, meaning they are uh, of universal uh, welfare to the community and providing clean renewable sources and are recognized as having satisfied the positive criteria in terms of a use variance. Uh, we also further to uh, encouraging coordination of various public and private procedures with the shape, uh, with shaping land use with a view of lessening the cost of such. In this case, we have an existing warehouse. We are utilizing the roof on the warehouse. We're not violating any height issues as we have uh, sufficient uh, if you will, flex there. The building's about thirty-three feet. We're adding uh, five inches of panels across the roof. And I think it was mentioned that the uh, certain components will add a three feet to it, but will still be under that forty-five foot cap. Uh, and finally, which is self-explanatory, and under the MLUL is to promote the utilization of renewable energy sources. And as I had mentioned, it's universally uh, accepted as something that's to the public good. Uh, and when we look at inherently beneficial, the legislature adopted uh, the court specifically adopted what's known as the CECA test. And the CECA test was born from a uh, a head trauma center in Wall Township. Uh, whereas the courts reviewed something that has been, so extraordinary beneficial to the public welfare, that it's recognized as satisfying the public uh, good. And we need to then focus upon the negative criteria, and that is the case here. Uh, the CECA test essentially is satisfying four prongs of the negative criteria. And they are specific uh, specifically, excuse me, uh, identifying the public interest at stake. And in this case, the public interest at stake is the generation of clean renewable energy for the use by a community solar program. It's a program that's recognized within your master plan as an objective for the community. Uh, the immediate region will benefit from uh, reduction in electrical costs, clean, clean renewable energy for, for everyone. And specifically, it'll generate enough power for three hundred and twenty-five homes annually, fifty-one percent of which would be steered towards low and moderate income households. Uh, the second prong of the CECA test is to identify any detrimental effects that would ensue from the grant of the variance. And these typically deal with issues such as noise, traffic, trash runoff, as well as visual intrusions. Uh, in this case, it's a very benign application. The, the panels will be roof-mounted. They won't exceed the height uh, limitation. Uh, and generally, they won't be adding any visual impact whatsoever. Uh, so I think we certainly satisfy that prong. Uh, the third is to determine whether we can reduce any detrimental impacts by imposing reasonable conditions on the use. And in this case, uh, we have a situation where it's, it's such a low-lying uh, addition to the roof. It won't be really visible. I don't think we need to do anything uh, in terms of masking what's along there. With respect to the uh, equipment along the side, that'll be set to the back. It's moved from the front yard. And it'll be in an area which really doesn't have any visual impact whatsoever upon that neighborhood. And then finally, weighing the positive against negative criteria, we're permitting a regenerative energy project that benefits the community. It's a low-scale in uh, installation. Uh, and it'll be geared towards uh, low and moderate income households. So when we look at balancing the CECA uh, criteria, we have something that's recognized as satisfying the positive criteria as of right by law. The negative impacts are are minimal, if any. So I do think we've satisfied the criteria for the D1 variance under the CECA test. With respect to the C variance, meaning the uh, the intrusion of the equipment within the side yard, uh, we would satisfy that under what's known as the C2 or balance test. Under the C2 balance test, we have three prongs of the positive criteria, two prongs of the negative criteria. Under the positive criteria, we have to indicate that the application relates to a specific piece of property, and it does. That purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by deviation from the zoning ordinance. And uh, I think we have on the record three or four uh, purposes of the MLU that would be advanced. And finally, that the benefits of the deviation would outweigh any benefit. The benefits are clear. Uh, we, we need to have some ground-mounted equipment in order to interconnect with the grid. The goal of any solar project that's community scale is to get that power from the building to the grid. Uh, in this case, we've put it in one of the, the least intrusive locations that we could, towards the back, far back corner of the property. Uh, we do have that equipment back there that uh, that I think between the two pieces were about a hundred and fifty square feet of equipment, six to seven feet in height, plus the, the utility poles. Uh, it's not a substantial intrusion into the visual and it does interconnect into the grid, which is just the operational aspects of how this system works. Uh, with respect to the negative criteria, we have to demonstrate that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I, I can't identify any detriment to the public good, quite frankly. It's, it's somewhat invisible. It's somewhat benign in terms of the use, uh, and it does generate. That, ah, dot com. We're on the negative criteria. Uh, again, I don't think there's any uh, negative impact. And with respect to uh, impairing the intent and purpose of your zone plan and zoning ordinance, your zone plan specifically fosters the idea of community solar and renewable energy. Uh, the ordinance, while not permitting it uh, within the LI zone uh, recognizes that uh, universally, the state has enacted that any parcel over twenty acres, and we're not over twenty acres on this parcel, uh, such a, such an installation would be permitted as of right in an industrial zone. Uh, so it's anticipated that these are compatible land uses. Uh, I, I agree with that. It is a compatible land use. Uh, and in this case, I think we do foster the zone plan, zoning ordinance in terms of foster, uh, advancing the goals of renewable energy and community solar. So when we look at the C variance on balance, I do think uh, we satisfy the criteria that's necessary for this board to uh, have a positive opinion of this application.
And then just to recap, is, is your testimony that granting the variances is proposed, um, will not have a negative impact?
It is.
On the surrounding uses? I have no further questions.
Thank you.
And uh, that's start. If you want to open it up to questions from the board and its professionals.
Do you have any other professionals that are coming forward? No? We're gonna start with our boards. Ronald, welcome aboard. Do you have any comments or suggestions?
Um, no, not really. I think uh, the planner hit all the points. I think one key uh, item that was mentioned was that the equipment was used to be in front. It's been moved to the side. And I just expressed my opinion that I think the intent of that is really, that it's really where the uh, where you got the equipment pads. What's, what's in the side yard is more like, you know, connections with poles and stuff. It's, it's, it's not. The original design had it in front, so they moved it. And really, I think the intent was to keep these, these uh, transformers and stuff out of side yard and front yard setbacks. This one is not in the front or side yard. It's not in a side yard setback. It's near the building, correct? Okay, so I mean, that, that lessens the, the impact on, on the plan. I think he hit all the other spots. I went through the master plan. I saw exactly the same sections he, he cited here about renewable energy and, 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 and so um, uh, all good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Walk.
Mr. Chairman, they, they did uh, reference my review letter from um, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and agreed to those comments in there. Um, I have nothing. It's uh, solar panels on a roof and an LI zone on top of a warehouse. Good spot.
Any board members have any questions? Mr. Tanzi?
Uh, two questions, uh, Dean Verdis.
Just put that mic on, please. Hit the bottom. Good.
Thank you. Uh, Dean Verdis, you said they're on the roof?
Uh, yes.
We have Ryan, we'll have Ryan come up.
Uh, yeah.
Are they in enclosure or just opened?
Uh, they are open.
Why don't you just uh, point out where they, where they describe where they are um, on the roof in relation to the rest of the panels?
Okay, and my second question is the transformer on the ground. Is that an uh, open south transformer? Is it going to be fenced around it or?
There's uh, protective bollards around it.
No fencing?
No, but there's an existing fence located on the site, but it's not specifically around the equipment.
There are, I believe, security measures that are put into it so that not just anybody can go in and access it. Courtney, if you want to come up and put that on the record. Just, if you heard his, his question, there, there's no security uh, issues with the equipment, correct?
There's no security issues. They, everything's in like an enclosure that is locked, so there's no access to anything. It's just a big closed metal case to it.
Okay.
Jaffe?
Okay, I'm trying to get a better understanding of this. I have panels on my roof and I have an inverter in my garage. Now, you're gonna have three, approximately three hundred and fifty homes utilizing this system. How is that gonna work as far as the individual inverters?
So when you, when you sign up for the program, it is feeding back into the utility grid, so that's where we're talking about the consolidated billing. So only a certain amount of customers can sign up for this. Um, and then everything that generates is going to be assigned to the customer. So when you receive your bill, you're going to get your discount on your bill.
So all three, okay, so all, all three hundred and fifty customers will have the same discount, the same kilowatts applied to their electric bill.
Yeah, that's why it's like a different.
Okay, I'll just try, you know, okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, so counsel, you were up, you know, your professionals are up here, which I, I know we're kind of doing both applications. Most of the testimony we heard, did it pertain to fifty-two, fifty-seven, twenty-five or fifty-two, fifty-eight? You said there were some variances between the both of them? I'd like the board to know exactly what the separation is before we put each one to a vote. Well, I'm sorry, the application numbers. I'm sorry.
So you were, that was for South Middlesex Avenue is what all the testimony has been so far? And you will do site-specific for the one Jabar Way next?
Yes.
So I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, so, so far, we've only done fifty-two, fifty-seven dash twenty-five. Um, and then they'll incorporate whatever, the general testimony, I believe, regarding the program. And, and they'll go site-specific and then uh, site-specific variances.
Okay, so not to confuse anyone going further, I think because we heard all the testimony on this application, we should put this to a vote and get it out of the way.
Sure, absolutely.
And then they could just highlight the differences between this and the next application, which should be a little codified, make it easier to move forward, so. Uh, board members, we uh, heard the application. Do I have a motion to approve or deny? I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Just, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe there's anybody here from the public who would provide any uh, comment, but we could just open quickly and close. Sorry.
Okay.
I know. I make you do stuff.
Still do motion.
You'll do a motion eventually, yeah, just do a motion to open.
Okay, motion open to the public? Anyone who should be heard? Motion to close? Motion to close?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I realized there's no one here. Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve. We had a second here from uh, Mr. Jaffe. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Lupo?
Yes.
Ms. Caratori?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzi?
Yes.
Mr. Jaffe?
Yes.
Mr. Vigani?
Yes.
Chairman LaFata?
Yes. Okay, board members, now we're gonna go into the differences on application BA five-two-five-eight dash two-five.
Reset to kind of reset it?
You can take a two-minute recess so our fingers could rest.
Yes. That's one of the ideas. It's one idea.[520.29]